Of the 7th of December.
None of it's a, nothing.
It'd be interesting to know what neighbour.
Wait, Captain.
Right.
I'm just gonna stare at them. Um, first apologies for being missing. Councillor Arapet. Councillor Heatherington is not very well, councillor Moore who's not very well. And, anybody else?
Councillor Huxley.
Oh, councillor Huxley, of course.
Has she apologised?
Yeah, well, um.
Family matter.
Got Covid, so.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, so we're not sure whether.
Yeah.
But she's not here.
She's done have a test, so.
Oh.
Well, she's all.
Just had it.
A saving sorry.
Yeah, indeed.
Just had it, okay. Okay, um, declarations of interest from anybody?
Uh, now that you're up for me?
No.
No, thank you. Um, now, the previous minutes, there's some complication with Ireland.
Um, I produced the minutes, um, for November and unfortunately I put in the wrong, uh, approval of minutes. I put September instead of October, but the minutes you did approve were the October ones. So it's a typo. Um, so what I'd like is members to propose and second that they approve the amended minutes for the, for, um, November 2022, please.
I'll propose.
I don't think I've got any of that, but I'm happy.
Oh, September. All those in favour?
I made a mistake.
All those in favour? Only three in favour, are you two up?
I wasn't here, so.
Right.
I was here, I'm in favour.
Well, let me take a favour, right. Thank you. Um, the next thing, oh, before we move on. Those of you who haven't noticed, I've made mince pies and please can you eat them?
And they're very delicious. They've come with great recommendations, thank you.
I can't eat them myself. Right, um, the Highways Improvement Plan.
Thank you, before you members, you have the, uh, version two of the Highways Improvement Plan, um, at the meeting in November. The town clerk's report listed that, uh, you come up with three ward priorities which you have done and, um, the town clerk has added them to the hip. However, um, KCC, um, are asking, are saying that it may only be possible to look at the top one or two priorities. Um, within this you have 20, something like 20. Uh, so, um, town clerk is asking for you to look at it again tonight and try and whittle it down to actual top priorities, one, one or two, maybe three.
Councillor Albin.
Yeah, if you remember chair, when we had that meeting with, um, KCC officers, um, that they had taken away two, which was St Luke's Avenue and a another, which eludes my mind in a moment, I think you raised it, chair.
Dumpton Park.
Dumpton Park Drive, big enough, yeah. So we need to know from KCC as to whether they are dealing with it and then we can put another.
Exactly. And, but they do say in all their blurb that it's not going to be placed, so they have to be roads that will self-lose, i.e. already have speed restrictions. And that's what we're, you know, like bumps for.
Yeah.
Like cones or mountain paths, traffic lights, um, which is what we've been trying to get in Dumpton Park Drive, but haven't got any money to do any of that. So it could be interesting to see, yeah.
If I may come back, chair, um, it appears to me that Kent County Council don't want to do anything.
Exactly.
That's exactly what, that's exactly what they're seeking.
Yep.
Um, so because if we already have to deal with those that do have speed humps or whatever, if that's their priority, they've already got those measures in place.
Yes.
So, um, I can't see that they actually wanna do anything. I think personally, I think we need to, uh, just go back to them, just to ask them about the two that they've taken away.
Yes.
Are they gonna do anything with those two separately from the other two and ask them if we had a further two? That would be, that I would.
Yeah.
I might phrase it differently, like, these are our two priorities, by the way, how are you doing with these other ones?
Ah, yes, that's great, yes.
I phrase it that way.
That's great, excellent.
Do you know what I mean? Because it's like, these are our priorities, oh, we never said they're priorities, but you said you were gonna crack on with them.
You said you were gonna crack on with those.
But these are our priorities, I'd, I'd, I'd.
Yeah.
Put it in a manner that.
Okay, yeah.
Cat's a shoehorned in, you know what I mean?
Members, sorry, would you like?
Sorry, did you get that?
Yeah, would you like me, so you're going to find two top priorities from the document and I will say, these are our two priorities, blah, blah. However, are KCC proceeding with?
No, just say, how are you getting on?
How are you getting on, okay.
Rather than are you doing it?
Are you still proceeding with?
With.
Two of the.
The two that we discussed previously, yeah.
I'd say, how are you getting on with?
That you agreed to take away and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, councillor Wing.
Uh, I want to change, these, I actually, following that meeting, walked around my entire ward and I do know my ward quite well because I've lived in three different places in my ward, I think I must be the only person who goes from Ramsgate to Ramsgate to Ramsgate. Uh, and, and also I'd started loads of conversations with residents months back, so it's fed into a whole narrative. And interestingly, once you walk, walk around your ward with a clipboard, people will come and talk to you. So these priorities are not quite, and I, I have done a Central Harbour hip, which I intend to send to our KCC councillors, because I'm with councillor Albin, I don't think we get our full share. But what bothers me is I think we have general issues that affect all our wards, so to just pick out one road is not right. So the main feature that, that came up with all the people I spoke to, uh, and there must have been 50 or 60 of them, because it took me nearly two weeks to do this, was safety and safety of pedestrians crossing. And in our own ward, Central Harbour, we, if you take traffic lights out and there isn't that, I think there's two traffic lights, maybe three, uh, there is only one crossing in Central Harbour that is, where traffic is actually forced to stop, and that is down, down in, down in the, down in the, down in the street. So the first priority for me or for us in our ward is safe crossing points. There's no safe crossing point on Park Road, on Paragon, on Grange Road, on Ellington, or even Westcliff, where traffic has to stop. And what residents are telling me, opposite, opposite the, even opposite the Grange Road, opposite, uh, opposite the Doctors, they've narrowed the street, but what people are telling me is ill people are having to play fast and loose trying to.
But you can't see what's coming, yes, you can't see what's coming around.
I, I recently, what really annoys me as well is I recently reported the, the condition of the roads by, I'm constantly reporting the condition of roads, up by Churchill Tavern, which is shocking, it's the worst piece of road I think we've got in Thanet. Uh, and he said, there's no, there's no problem with that, so I took pictures and sent him the pictures and he has been out. And I said, it's dangerous because people are crossing at that point. And he actually said to me, pedestrians, the road isn't that bad, it's due for, to be repaired next year, well, we'll see it when we believe it. And people shouldn't be crossing at that point, they should walk to the nearest drop curb. The nearest drop curb, believe it or not, is either up at the lookout where, where you've got St Augustine's on the bends or down in town. And I find that absolutely shocking. The, the key thing that really hit me hard because of also parking issues is if you are, if you've got mobility issues, if you're in a wheelchair or you've got a mobile scooter or your parent, mum or dad, with kids in a wheelchair, you are absolutely stuffed. You've got nowhere to cross and a vast number, a, a, a number of our, our pavements are actually taken up by cars just parking wherever they want. So my priorities or our priorities would be, safe crossing points would be number one on key roads. Number two would be 20 is plenty and number three would be exploring the extension of residents' parking scheme, which I think would solve some of our.
We certainly need something in the high street where they, with children that will cross.
It's not just the high street.
No, no, I know it's not just the high street, but I would just add that to your list, sorry, councillor.
I think councillor Austin.
No, you were, you were before me and.
Sure. It's, um, as much as I agree with councillor Wing, don't get me wrong, I'm, uh, uh, perfectly. Um, I wonder whether KCC will go for that. I wonder whether they want something a little bit more specific. So if you turned around and said, safe crossing areas, I think they'd turn around and say, what street, where? You know, like, I, I don't think it could be as loose as that, this is my guess. So if we were going to do something like that, I think unfortunately it would narrow it down to a particular street or particular streets. We can always try for more than one, can't we? Um, but, but I think it needs to be more specific and I would take advice from anybody that knows this better than me, so, but do you see where I'm going with this one?
Oh, yeah.
I was trying to say, what, what, where?
Can I just add something in? I learnt at the Labour Party meeting on Monday, you were there, David, weren't you? That apparently the reason Tunbridge Wells and South Oaks and all that places get much more money than we do for their roads and pavements is they have someone on the council. Their job is to deal with it. It feels, they're, they're equivalent to TDC.
Oh, right, okay.
Right? Um, which obviously.
They have somebody on the district council.
Well, whatever council, this is Rob Yates that this.
Yes.
It was Rob Yates that said this. He came to talk about.
That would be, remember.
Yeah. So there's a cabinet, there's a cabinet member on the district council.
I don't know what council.
All right, okay.
It's the local council that deals with Tunbridge Wells.
It would be district.
Okay, so there's a cabinet member who has some responsibility.
Who said it was an officer?
In that case then, it, we would, we, because.
We don't have.
We used to have a highways, we used to have a highways department.
Yeah.
And the officer, uh, which would be, um, or you know it was, David, and I can't remember his name.
Well, they used to live in Elving House, didn't they?
Yeah, but anyway, um, sorry, chair.
Oh, well, what's he got with the parking and so on along here? When he went to KCC in the end, he left TDC and went to KCC, is that what we mean?
They were always under the auspices of KCC.
He was.
Employed by Thanet.
That's what I was thinking of, was a TDC officer who's now.
I just thought I'd throw that in, we're on our own here.
We have got two KCC councillors that I think we should be pressing.
Absolutely, yes.
Is a KCC issue.
Yeah, sorry, councillor.
Councillor Austin.
Um, Austin. Two things, um, the first one is I noticed that there's quite a lot here about lines of sight, um, for crossings and double yellow lines. And it strikes me that double yellow lines are an inexpensive thing that we might be able to get going relatively to, to doing the whole consultation for a new crossing, et cetera. And that actually there are places like Dumpton Park Drive, but a number of other places where that would make a huge difference. Notably, the business about the cut through, um, in, in your ward, um, where.
They are doing them.
Where what they're doing is not going to be sufficient according to residents for, to, you know, to make the lines of sight better.
But they are, they are going to do from there, the legal, what they're supposed to do.
Yeah.
Except they had to go to consultation, they had to put up notices.
Yes.
And invite comments and quite a lot of people are against them if they're outside their house, despite the fact they've got to try.
I hate the parking, sorry to interrupt, but I mean, I'm with you, they all hate the parking, they want somebody else to move the cars, et cetera, et cetera. And when you mentioned the double yellow lines, they're like, oh, I'm not having that, where are you, you know, I'm not gonna park my car, it's really.
Deputy Town Clerk, can I actually make a, an amend to, a correction on the document, which is that it says Victoria Parade and the cut through to Win Stanley Crescent, it says it twice. And if there's a cut through from Victoria's Parade to Win Stanley Crescent, I want to know about it, because that would save me a huge amount of time. But it should be Winterstoke Crescent, in fact.
I don't, yeah. Can you show me where it is?
Yes, it's on, it's on page three and then it's on again later, the same thing is repeated later.
Sorry, councillor.
I'll show it you after the, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
I was gonna make a similar point to councillor Austin. It looks to me as though KCC are going to expect us to pay for whatever, whatever's done.
Yeah.
Um, some of these things, as councillor Austin said, will be a lot cheaper than, than other things that have been.
Well, they're not expecting us to pay for the ones in Dumpton Drive.
Well, okay, if you can get them to pay, certainly, my experience of getting the 20 mile an hour speed limit.
Yes.
Is that we had to pay for the whole thing.
The whole pit was supposed to pay for, yes.
Hmm.
That's why we're gonna do.
And that, that, that cuts from memory about 24.
Okay.
So we're not gonna get many of those, if any.
Next, um, who's next?
This financial year. Now, we are putting.
Oh, sorry, I didn't.
I think it's eight K a year, is it, aside?
Aside, yes.
But we've also got to pay for the work that KCC do to design everything.
Absolutely, that, and, and the consultation.
Yes.
Whereas if we just bought some cheap yellow bank.
Some of these are, as councillor Austin said, are, are, are just yellow lines.
Yes.
And, and if we want to get something done this year, well, I tried to suggest that we do, then, no, this year, this.
Council.
This council year, then I would suggest that we go for some of those.
Well, yes, that's a good idea, but it's not that straightforward because of the consultation and people objecting and we should try.
Whatever we do, whatever we do on highways, it would have to be consulted about, there's no getting around that.
Councillor Albin.
Yeah, I mean, I think like on the 2020 that you'd done, and you never called it, it wasn't, it wasn't a council decision, if not, was it purely, um, you, David, as a ward councillor, together with you?
No, no, council decision.
Council decision.
We all approved it, yeah.
To do the whole of the whole of the Ramsgate.
Would be a great place to start, in view to.
That's, that's, that's great, so we're about to pay, so that's a definite, that we would have to pay for what, whatever. I don't know that, but anyway, um, double yellow lines are only as good as they can be enforced.
Yeah.
You can have double yellow lines from here to Manchester.
Yep.
And people will still park on them, it matters not. Um, so I was wanting to take the point up, um, as well about what KCC are expecting from us. May I make us s- suggesting, it was great having, it was all right having that online meeting, but it's not the same as having them sitting here.
Yeah, yeah.
And you see the whites of their eyes and then, um.
Make them cross the.
I, I.
Yeah.
I, I, again, I'm a KFC broom, but, uh, for what I see as like wishy-washy stuff, if, if we've got a real problem somewhere, when we need to highlight that and deal with it, right? So if it's through road, like you're saying, like Park Road, you know, whizzing down through there, you know, we've all been, all been down there, stuff like that, they're the type of things that I think that, that people are more at risk at than anything else, whether it's the car parked on the double yellow line, it's way of life now, so you, you've just gotta deal with that. But I think where there are serious issues, those are the places that we need to deal with, where we can prove, like you in Dumpton Park Drive, like me in St Luke's Avenue, where there's been accidents, where there's been that, they need to set up and do something about it. If you're gonna look at somewhere that's in, in the backwater, for want of a better word, they're not gonna be interested in that, to be, to be quite honest.
Well, we need Richard Heaps out to walk Dumpton Park Drive with us and look at all the corners.
Because you had a serious problem there, that's why.
Well, he didn't accept it when he saw us, but we, we, we are.
Well, someone knocked off their bike and.
Killed.
It was not serious?
Oh, no, it wasn't serious enough, there'd been six people knocked off their bikes.
You know, so.
That would have been more to the point.
Yeah, sorry, I mean, that, that's the way I think that we should go, that's, that's just my point of view.
Well, I mean, I think the most dangerous one personally is the one near you coming down.
So, no, Intum Road was another one that was presented to me, but I'm sorry, Tricia was before me.
Tricia, sorry.
I was, sorry, I think, were you before me, David?
So.
Yeah.
Well, I was just gonna respond to, to councillor Albin, if it's a road safety issue, you know, if you can prove through accident statistics that it, that it needs doing for safety reasons, then KCC should pay for it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, great, David, absolutely.
Okay, right. Um, my understanding was, when we were first told about this hip, and I may have got this completely around my neck, but that if we could identify, say, one priority that KCC would pay for each year, then there would be other things, smaller things that we could pay for. I mean, I noticed that we've got stuff on here which ranges from the creator pedestrian crossing in X place to put up a sign about this. I mean, one of the, put up the signs is mine, uh, at the end of here. My understanding is those kinds of things are actually quite affordable for us to just go ahead and do and we could take them off the list and push KCC on the stuff, as David says, that's about actual pedestrian safety.
Well, I don't think we should take anything off the list.
We can't.
I also don't think you can.
Well, I said, well, take, okay, take them off the list in the sense of not expect KCC to do anything about this, because what we don't want them to do is say, we'll put up a no recycling sign in such and such a place and that's it, you've had your chips for this year. We want them to actually be concentrating on the things that make a difference.
The point of this document is, this should be an ongoing working document, which is the way I, I intend to, to deal with the one that I've done for Central Harbour. You know, Central Harbour, I wandered around, I've got about four roads left to do, one of them's station approach, but this needs to be a working document that has everything in it and, and, and I think there needs to be, our main priorities do need to be about pedestrian safety, because that's what's coming out of all these conversations.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, I, I mean, in mind, there are things that TDC needs to do, over marking of yellow, double yellow lines is a, is a, is a TDC responsibility. Park Road, they experimented with a bloody bus stop. The bus stop was in there, so the yellow lines were taken out and then the bus stop was realised it was in a wrong place, so the bus stop's no longer there, there's no longer yellow lines, which means you can't have two-way traffic there on part of Park Road and it's a main artery coming in and out. So I think we need to have a document that we, as a, as RTC review every year, because that's what I'll be doing, either if I don't get elected, as a resident, uh, if I don't get elected next year and.
No, I'm not standing in sector.
Uh, because these, these are issues that residents are bringing up and residents are concerned about, EV charging points is another one. And I think if we had a document that was an ongoing working document that we updated every year, so one of the things we tick off.
Well, I think this, this is ongoing work.
Yes, I think it's.
Well, then it needs to have general stuff and specific stuff in it.
Yeah, well, maybe it does need to be refined, yes.
Chair, I think, I think a way forward with this, so that we understand better, so that we know what KCC is doing, is to have two or three representatives of Ramsgate Town Council through the town clerk to request a meeting at Maidstone with Kate or Ashford, wherever, wherever it is, at KCC Highways Headquarters, to meet with the chief officer there and to say, look, everything that we want to say and understand from them, it's all right if someone going, oh, well, we'll only do two priorities, but where's that come from?
Yeah.
Is it Paul, is that Paul Vallow that, who's, I want to know, somebody?
No, I, above him, yeah.
Above him.
But we've got to know what our priorities are.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying not, David, but we've got, what we've got, everybody or people, different, different members saying about different priorities.
I think we've all said pedestrian safety and safety.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but it's all over the place.
Yeah, exactly.
They're saying that we've got to come up.
Well, let's take it back to them and say it's pedestrian safety, we've all been out and here is.
But I think in a meeting it might be easier to do, because if we did have a list of roads that we knew that we're, we're going to, if they, if they really pinned us down to it, we could say, right, well, okay, they're those four, then fine, but if we argue our case for pedestrian safety.
Yes.
Then of course, as I said, I agree with you about that, but I think they'd want specifics. They might turn around and say, well, which roads and why and where? So we'd need that information, wouldn't we?
Yes.
I think having a meeting is a really good idea.
And could we involve our KCC councillors in that?
And, and, sorry, chair.
Yeah, I have tried for seven years since I lived here to get something done about the upper high street because of all those children that are crossing and because of all small children that are going up to the primary school on pavements this wide. And, and I've been told by both KCC councillors that there's no money.
Why don't we ask KCC what they think the pedestrian safety issues are?
So.
Chair, because at the end of the day, we could go back to them with two things, two things that we feel is a priority and they say, we don't. Then we're back to square one. We need to know exactly what they think is a priority, exactly what they're saying, we need to know that.
Yes.
So I'm gonna propose, up to members whether they agree or they, or they don't, that we ask the town clerk to contact KCC Highways to arrange for us to go and meet with them.
Seconded.
Yeah.
So we can totally understand exactly what they.
And that we invite the KCC councillors to join us?
Yeah, if they want, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I was saying.
Right to ourselves.
Because we don't know what the KCC going to.
Freda Shank did go on about this thing that I'm been going on about and they got it wrong, they put this island refuse up in Chatham Street instead of across the high street where they all.
Because we could talk, we'd go round in four hours, we'd be rejected at planning applications.
So I think that's a good idea, all those in favour. Oh, sorry, do you want to say something?
Well, that isn't gonna solve anything, that's just gonna delay and then, and then it'll come back to us for us to decide our priority.
We can decide our priorities anyway.
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's not what's being proposed.
I don't think they're future exclusive, are they?
Yes, that's what I was thinking, the same thing.
Proposed is that we ask KCC what their priorities are.
No, we asked for a meeting, we know that councillor Albin's not said that, he wants for a meeting to say.
I want to understand.
Okay.
We need to understand is what the, what the, um, criteria is.
Yes.
For, for putting in things that are.
But we go with our priorities and say, right, well, you know, tell us, this is.
Because their priority money, in which case double yellow lines are gonna be their priority for, for, that, that they want us to have.
Yeah.
Or is it, as you've said, road safety issues?
Road safety.
Whatever, but.
Our priority, yes.
KCC have got a process, they look at any ideas that, that come forward, they test it through consultation. If people want it and it's sensible and, and, uh, it agrees with all the rules and regulations, they'll do it.
Only if they can afford it, though, presumably.
Only, only if we can, only if we can afford it.
Yeah, so if we pay for it, but isn't the idea of a hip that there is something, somewhere, that they will pay for?
Yeah.
That there is one priority that they will pay for each year?
Nothing through the hip, they'll, they'll pay for road, you know, road traffic.
Yeah, what, do you tell them, I love the way that you're stalling this, but what exactly do they pay for?
Find out, it's funny, we would need to find out.
Yeah, I bet they won't pay for anything, but we can but try.
So what, what is it proposed we go into this meeting, say?
What proposing, what proposing, David, is that we find that we'd meet, meet with the officers to see, uh, to see how our priorities, when we decide a priority of how that is gonna work and also, um, are they gonna pay, are they not gonna pay? And how many priorities, you've said, who said that we need two priorities? Ireland's red, where's that from?
The, from that meeting we had, it's.[1660.32]
Yeah, 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 but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, Pat, you know, so we have a multitude of stuff here.
Yeah.
Multitude of stuff. Well, what what are they gonna pay for, what are they gonna do? How are we gonna get the money for it? And I suppose if we have priorities and we can't afford it.
Members.
Councillors.
The money they'll put in is 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 through our KCC councillors. They have money that they could apply, which is which is what they did in Mellicott, in fairness.
Um, do you want to say something?
So what KCC have said within um the town clerk's report is that we have twenty-five priorities. At that point, we had twenty-five. Um and due to officers' time and KCC resources, it may only be possible to look at the top one or two priorities per year. But each district is different. The hip is a living document, so even if your requests are not achievable one year, they may be another year. That's how we got down, that's how we got it down to to, yeah.
Chair, I I withdraw my.
Can we?
I withdraw my.
Councillor Austin, speak please.
I don't want you to, because I think it's.
I think it's a good idea.
Councillor Austin, sorry.
Can can we ask KCC, whether we meet with them or not, can we ask KCC to give us a rough costing for each of our priorities? Because we we're saying what we could afford, what KCC uh councillors could afford, et cetera, what what uh what KCC themselves might prioritize. And actually, we've we've not got very good information about.
No, I know.
And I know from talking to Green Party colleagues on KCC, but some of the costings are enormous for what we might regard as a fairly cheap thing, because, you know, I I know nothing about about highways maintenance and whatever, but by the time you've included full consultation and those kinds of things, you're looking at twenty-five thousand.
I'd say, but whether we can get them to do that within this council year or not.
Um, but I mean, just, I mean, we're not, I I I'm not saying let's have a detailed call, but a ballpark figure for how much for this or how much for that.
Councillor Wayne.
I I don't think, should we withdraw it, Steve? Because meeting with KCC gives us a chance to advocate for our residents. And it's clear in these meetings that we have shared concerns in a number of areas to do with pedestrian safety, the bonkers driving we have, no enforcement. In fact, I suggest we also need to meet with TDC's enforcement for them to explain why people can sit on double yellow lines for four days and no ticket issues.
Because you have to go to the offices, that's why.
We've got four.
We've got the one.
Yes. Councillor Green.
I agree with a meeting with them. I agree that one of the questions we should ask is how much.
How much do these things cost?
Costs. Let's at least reduce it down to to five issues to talk to them about. If we try and talk to them about all these issues, we'll we'll look ridiculous.
Yes, I agree with you.
They're used to dealing with par, small parish councils, one or two priorities.
Yeah. But this is quite repetitive anyways.
And and they're not used to dealing with a.
Yes.
A town like Ramsgate.
Well, let's deal with a couple of roads.
Could I make a a a a suggestion that it's pedestrian safety, we name a couple of roads? Preferably not in the same ward.
They're all pedestrian safety, aren't they?
Oh, yes, it's all to do with crossing.
Crossing.
Yes, but again, if you're being specific, I mean, that's the idea, isn't it? Councillor Wing's just suggested it is pedestrian safety. And let's name a couple of roads, because then they can't wheedle out with like, well, what am I gonna do with that?
I will be.
Well, what's your worst one, Park Road?
No, I think no.
Can we just have one meeting, please, Councillor Green?
Yeah, sorry.
Look, we're just about to invest best part of a million pound in Radcliffe House.
In what?
Radcliffe.
Radcliffe Town. Oh, yeah.
It's in Odenham Street, where regularly the cars go up on the pavement and drive past it on the pavement, because they can't get past each other. We're gonna have to do something about that. And the and the only solution I can see is to make it one-way.
I agree, totally always.
So let's have that as one of our priorities.
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
I'm sorry, I completely disagree. I've walked my entire ward, although Radcliffe House is their.
Effingham.
Well, Effingham Street is probably their as a one-way. I've had lots more people tell me that they'd like to see Westcliff Road one-way and round into Paragon. And and if you're gonna do something like that, it's the same with double yellow lines. You have to, you have to try and work out what the impact is. I can tell you now, they still go up the curb on Addington Street, they still drive down there far too fast. And once a week, we still have cars going the wrong way. So a one-way without enforcement won't work. And actually, there are many other streets in my ward where the risk to pedestrians is in in my opinion, after walking it, is much more serious. And on Newington Road near the school, where you've got school kids, there's a pelican crossing, but there's huge issues there. I've been sent the the in the crash data for there by a resident who lives in my ward. I've sent it to Steve Albon, because the issue is his ward. I I I.
I'm not.
Effingham Street is not a high priority, I'm afraid, in my opinion, as something of a council.
Well, they.
Yeah.
They'll be.
Well, let's get there when.
Well, how do. When Radcliffe, when Radcliffe House next year.
A bit different.
Then we'll arrange it.
It's as simple as that.
I'll arrange it back.
I mean, sorry, exactly, exactly the point is, you know, the the point, sorry, councillor, that you're missing i- is the fact that it is going to be exceptionally busy with with what we're proposing, that's the idea. Now, whether we do that now or we put it off to a later date is a different matter. But it is a road that is going to need something done, because it will not be sustainable the way it is with the future works that we've got planned for it. So if you don't want to do it now, that's up to you to 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 decide, but it will need something done to it. I'm not saying, you know, there aren't other streets that residents now especially are going to say, because of course they're not talking about that, because they haven't seen the works that are gonna be done to it, and the effects aren't there yet. But we do need to think about it at some point.
Right, do we have a proposal at all?
You still have a proposal on table from Steve, which to meet.
Well, let's deal with that.
Yeah, can we add to that?
Do it.
We try and prioritize everything.
Would I?
Before we meet them, for our own sakes.
Yeah, I think um what we can do, I think is the right way around is what David said. If we're gonna, if we're gonna prioritize, prioritize them first, then we can take that.
To a meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all ones.
So. So can you adapt your proposal, please?
I would be happy to.
Well, I I propose an amendment to Steve's.
Yeah.
That prior to that meeting, we try and cut down the number of our priorities this year to five.
We've already got two.
Well, we could put them in order, yeah. So it would be the top five. I don't think we ought to let any get out of the.
No, that's what you're saying, this, sorry, David, but Chair, that this is, all of this is an ongoing doc.
Yeah.
But it doesn't mean it all has to be done in the first time. There's a lot of stuff on here which can be done later.
We'll just get the top ones.
And and don't forget, Chair, we've got two already that they're dealing with. So I think we just put, we put three would be my.
Three more?
Yeah.
Three more, yes.
Okay, Councillor Austin.
Can we do that by circulating all members by email and giving people some kind of a voting system? You know, three points for one, two points for another, whatever, so that we actually can see what what we all agree on?
Chair, I'd 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 think, you know, I I'd agree with councillor Wing uh that, you know, personally, you've already got one in my ward, and councillor Huxley's and councillor Crippendin's. You've got one in Sir Moses Mony Mony Fiori that you're dealing with. So Central Harbour and two other wards.
Yep.
Would would be, so I would be saying to my two colleagues here, pick what you think is the is the most important thing that that can be done.
In Central Harbour Ward?
In central harbour.
I'd have to ever think about that. I mean, I'm reluctant to choose up by me, because I live there, so we'd have to talk about it as well. We'd have to, the three of us would have to agree. But it's got to be a crossing point, whether it's, yeah, it would be a crossing road.
None of us have put forward things that are important to us.
No, no.
I mean.
The things that are important for the ward, you're just representing your ward, aren't you?
Yeah, because that's what we should do.
But if there's one in.
The one, sorry, to my ward, it would be twenty is plenty across the whole entire ward.
Well, that that would be ideal, but.
Ain't gonna get that.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Um, we could talk to KCC about this twenty thing, because that Peter Burrows said it was the cheapest way to do it. Yes.
Chair, there are obviously here this evening, all wards are not covered.
Hmm.
The members are not here from from other wards.
Exactly, we need to.
So uh I I would add on to my motion, apart from David's amendment, is to is to for the town clerk to put, to notify all members of the council to prioritize one in their ward. And then we will can come back to say that we've got three priorities, we want one in each ward of the wards that are not, but we've got one for Central Harbour, so we want two others.
Well, then you've got Northwood, you've got Nethercourt.
Yeah.
Pegwell.
Newington.
Newington, that's four. So you only want two out of those four?
Two out of four.
Okay, so is that a proposal?
That's a proposal, Chair.
Well, I will second that, all those in favor? Right, we have a resolution. So we're going to do that. Okay, can we move on then to the planning application?
Please.
Okay, members, your first application is um TV Bond Engineering Supplies Bristol Place outline application for the erection of eight commercial stroke industrial units following the demolition of existing buildings, including access landscaping and layout. You have the comments up there of the Ramsgate Heritage and Design Forum. Um they have a few comments in there, um partly um agreeing with it and partly disagreeing with it, as you can see, thank you. And Dean will.
Could I just point out, it's an outline application?
Yes, it is, sorry.
Yes, Councillor.
Okay, so I called this in. Um, it is a a piece of land that is designated for commercial use. So it's not gonna be housing, but there are concerns amongst residents about the scale of the proposed development and about the possible use of the commercial units. And also there are issues around access on a rather narrow bit of the high street. So there are, nobody's saying there can't be some development here, but it's a question of whether this is appropriate development. It's it's very close to a lot of housing, it's very much overlooked. It's the area that people will be familiar with, that used to have lots and lots of old cars on it, et cetera. When Mr Bond died, he left it to um the NHS Trust, who are obliged under their um statutes to sell it to at the greatest possible profit. And they duly set, sold it to someone who wants to create a a a small commercial development there. So um I I I think what I would want to say is pretty much what the Heritage and Design Forum are saying. You know, we we need industrial units, we know this is a commercial site, but it's a commercial site i- in an area that's very, very densely populated. It needs to be, I believe, fewer units, because there's the units, no parking. Where's, where are all the cars gonna go, et cetera, et cetera. There are issues about access, there are issues about HGVs. And then then there are considerations around the the landscaping of the site, the visibility of the site from elsewhere, the materials that are used, all those kinds of things, allowing for the fact this is a conservation area.
Sorry, Dean, could I ask you to just go back to?
Just one.
With you, sorry.
Yeah, um councillor Albon.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, since I've been here, since nineteen seventy, whatever it was. Um, you know.
We're sure fans.
This site has always always been used, but in a very modest way.
Yes.
Um, and and this is a a vastly different uh kind of experience that that they wish to put here. I totally agree with uh councillor Austin in relation to how many units are on the site. I think uh, I think, what was there, eight?
Eight.
Units.
Yes.
Um, yeah, eight, eight units. Um, I think they could drop the bottom two, one and two there. Uh and as councillor Austin has said, uh if there are, we don't know what they're gonna be used for, but um what I what I have concern about, Chair, is reading the description of the application. It says eight commercial stroke industrial units. Now, is that heavy industrial, is that light industrial?
No, I can tell you.
Well, it doesn't say that here.
Well, they've applied for E.
E.
Class E, yeah. Class E, um three, they're not allowed to create any dust, smells.
Light industrial.
Light.
Yeah, light industrial.
But um I I reckon, I think you're, I don't know, maybe right about having less units and there's certainly access to sort out, but it's better to put our efforts into making sure, this this man who's bought the site has car breakers yards. And I think that's, residents are worried that that's gonna happen. And it will not, it's not allowed to happen.
Well, that's not a light industrial use.
Yes.
If I.
So I I think they're worried that something unpleasant will happen there.
Well.
But they, you, we've got to make sure that it's not. You see, I don't know whether you know, we built a little studio at the back of Chapel Place. Earlier this year, we finished it. It's supposed to be an artist's studio, a potter's studio, for the artist in our family who's keeping a low profile at the moment. Um, and I get two, three people a week coming to ask me about that studio, because there is such a shortage of places. So if there's things like artists, potters, jewelers, costume makers, all that.
The jewels.
Yeah.
It's fantastic, that that type of device, yeah. Yeah, can I?
Chair, yeah, I I was gonna finish what I was saying, yeah. Um, but I do believe it's.
Too many.
Two units too many. Um, providing it's light industrial, then uh they can't change to heavy industrial without consent, and that's subject to enforcement action from the council should they do so. But we've got to deal with what's there. Now, any light industrial units that they're gonna put up there, they're not gonna be pretty. So, you know, you're gonna have, because they're industrial units, you can't make industrial units pretty.
Can.
Well, you can, but they're not going to be because of the cost.
Yeah, exactly.
So either you have that site used and continued to be used for what it's always been used for, often, remember. Um, I don't see a problem with those. The other thing, of course, is that the town lead, which is adjacent to it, is currently a planning application in to knock that down and to build.
This list, although it's.
Oh, they've approved it, have they?
Here on our list, but it's already approved.
Oh, well, we, they got worried about that, then, haven't we? Um, so my own view, Chair, is that is that we do go back to the council with with the recommendation that we think there are too many units on the site, there's not enough parking on this, on the site.
Of access issues.
And access onto a very busy highway is a concern.
For.
It's narrowed, I feel for hundreds of, whatever that road.
Said, they're happy to um widen the access, but because the road appears to be unadopted. Right, um it's not clear that the owner of this site can.
Yeah.
Do that. And yes, sorry.
Yeah, there are, there are legal issues about the ownership of the access road as well.
That's a problem.
That that going on as well, just too complicated. But I think to pick up on on the Chair's point earlier about residents are worried about that this will be, that there will be smell and noise and whatever, I think the residents are justifiably worried in the light of a neighboring uh development where there is um a car spray in place, which is both noisy and smelly and causes considerable annoyance for to residents and where we've had environmental health backwards and forwards and backwards and forwards, and they've not been able to do anything about it. So I can understand why residents are concerned. So I would want to suggest that we recommend uh the things that um councillor Albon has suggested, uh but also that we express concerns about the fact that this is a very densely populated area where people are living very close together, and we really need to make sure that there is no nuisance element in in this.
That densely populated, we have Astor, we have the leisure.
Yes, but look at how the.
Have the town.
Yes, but look at how the Chatham Street house is back on to it and everything.
There's only a few houses in Chatham.
And actually, and and actually, when we came to look at.
It will be.
When we came to look at the um notifications, the the period of notification had to be extended because of residents who were were going to be affected not having been notified because.
This is a common thing with realizing the planning, there's all sorts of applications where they don't put up.
Yeah, they hadn't realized um how many people had been notified.
Yes, councillor.
Chairman.
I mean, if you could guarantee that those eight places would be filled with some lovely potters and some artists and some lovely jewelry makers, it would be fabulous.
And there'd be only one car per unit.
Because we have a shortage of indu, light industrial units anyway. And as a regular user of, you know, visiting the electrical company on Pysons, they're dirty, busy, smelly places.
Well, they're not allowed to be.
Even if they're light industrial, they are frequented by lots and lots of cars. They look similar to the sort of industrial units that you would find on Pysons, probably better, in a better way. They're cheaply built, you know, they're not, they're not fully fully insulated. So there will be a degree of noise, and it is quite a densely populated area there. You know, if you go to the Pysons of the state with an industrial unit similar to that, it's not overwhelmed with housing around around the area. So I agree, there's too many units, we need to reduce that, so there's more parking on site for visitors to whatever businesses go there. Uh, yeah.
Can I have councillor Nixon, I'll be, you will.
Sorry. David just whispered whispered in 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 my ear, and I think he's right. Um, which is that should any, should this be approved? Um, not in the outline, but certainly in the full app, full application when it when it comes in. Um, any light industrial or industrial building will have a restriction on hours, which would be.
Yeah.
Eight till six during the week, one o'clock on Saturdays, no Sundays or bank, bank holidays. So I think there is a, that is a a way forward. But I I propose what I. So I think there is a, that is a, a way forward. But I, I propose what I, what I'd said, Chair, that, that we.
Seconded.
We support the use in prin.
The use in principle.
Yeah, 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 probably can't not, because it's already, it's already a commercial use.
I would say, just so, I was, I was gonna say, yes, I'd put it in principle, although I'm not even sure I'd. I would just take two off, I might take four off, I mean.
Yes, I'd take four.
They're also higher. I mean, I would actually say they need to be more in keeping with the area.
With the area, yes, absolutely.
Because the elevation pictures there, they are, they do stand out and if they're ugly as well, so I would want less.
And some landscaping and whatever.
A landscaping part of it.
Yeah.
And um, and to be more in keeping.
Large streets.
We can't actually see it from the High Street. Right, they are reducing, they claim, the level of the ground at the inner end by half a metre. Um, maybe they are a little bit high. Um.
Just to have an office above.
But they're not um, not as high as that terrace of ha- houses in the High Street.
Okay, so what are you looking at there then?
I think there's a problem with unit one, the height of unit one. I think it overlooks.
Yes.
Yeah.
We object on the grounds of, of what councillor Nixon just said. We don't say how many, do we? But it is, it is overdevelopment, too many units, too many units. We've got issues about. It, it, the concerns of the residents, that the effects it will have on them.
Yeah.
And why, and why are there too many units?
It's full up, you can't get anything on the, else on the side.
Anything.
Yeah.
Don't get near, well, get parking, you can't have cars in there.
You can. You've got one, you've got one car space per unit, so that's no visitors, no deliveries, no anything. It's not, it's not feasible, Pat, how it is.
It isn't.
Can't, you can't just take a unit out and make that space into a lot more car, or two units, into a lot more car parking.
Can.
Why?
Why?
Well.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
Do you want me to read the proposal?
Chair, if I may, if you come up Dane Valley Road, to, up to the unit, go up there and see what light industrial would be up there. It's, it's like.
Yes, cars are plenty.
Council never goes up there because you think, just get on with it, I know when I was enforcement officer up there, we just should go, I'll just, that's why I've got no hair, I'll just pull it out.
Anyway, this is a proposal we need to vote on, whether we agree with it or not, it's, it's, it's up to you to vote, isn't it, really?
Indeed, indeed. Can we move on, Chair? If that's okay.
Yes, so the proposal is.
Let's read the proposal, Chair, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
RTC supports the uh use of the landing principle, but considers there to be too many units. Uh, so therefore considered overdevelopment. I will reword this.
Yeah.
Um, not enough parking, accessing to busy highways a concern. Disturbance to a densely populated area is also a concern. And therefore any light industrial should have restrictions of times of use.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Has that been seconded?
It's been seconded by councillor Austin.
Super, right, all those.
Those in favour, um. Right, I'll just go in. You have standing.
Okay, we, we don't, we don't need a camera.
I don't want like that. Hope they're not all like that.
The next.
I wanna be gone by half hour, Chair.
The next one.
How much?
Big voice, go on, the next one.
Little Newlands Piggery, Newlands Lane, extension to approved Gypsy and traveller site with two. Mobiles to increase to four mobiles, part retrospective and parking for fi- four vehicles. Uh, when this originally came to us um in October twenty twenty. Uh, Ramsgate Town Council strongly objected to the application on the grounds that it is considered to be overdevelopment of site. Which is demonstrated by the fact that the applicant is unlawfully using the land opposite owned by Newlands School. For parking their vehicles, including a horse box and grazing of a horse. Ramsgate Town Council also considers the use of the access road as having a detrimental effect on the school. Uh, the previous planning application was refused by TDC and the applicant appealed the decision and it was allowed, was allowed with conditions. Councillor Austin called this in on the grounds of that previous comment. Thank you.
So can we see the plan, please?
So this is the previously approved plan and this is what they, they want to put basically two more units on.
So they're not doing anything across the road now, or not owning up to doing anything across the road. Is that right?
It's only on that area.
Councillor, agree.
I would guess the appeal was allowed because TDC's.
Yes.
Abject failure.
Failure to, this is.
To, to designate a sign.
Yeah.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yes. Um. Yes, I personally don't see, yeah, um councillor Austin.
I, I called this in because I'm a bit taken aback by the Ramsgate Town Council's objection the last time. In the light of the huge difficulty that we have with Gypsy and traveller sites in. All right, that we have uh, 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 with regard to Gypsy and traveller sites in this area. And at the moment, we have families living down on the Ramsgate Port who have been there for eighteen months now, which is much longer than they should have been. But that's because there's nowhere else for them to go. And if we evict them from there, we go back into the cycle of uh encroachment, enforcement, eviction. And we've got away from that by those families having somewhere to be. It's not an ideal place to be. We know it's not an ideal place to be. It was rejected for previously as a possible site. But in the meanwhile, those families have signed up with the doctors, had their Covid jabs, got five of their kids into school. There is all sorts of huge potential for offering a more appropriate site for Gypsies and travellers. In the Ramsgate area, not just in Thanet. And there is therefore, I believe, a strong argument for supporting this application.
Yeah, and councillor.
Uh, I, I find it quite ridiculous that I probably report more fly tipping by non-Gypsy traveller people in the course of my role as a. As a, as a ward councillor than any, than any.
Than anything else.
Uh, this is land they own. My understanding is they want two units because they've got an elderly couple.
Yeah.
Uh, one who's got Alzheimer's and the other one with failing health needs. And then they've got an older. Uh, an older, an older adult child with learning disability and they need to be near their family. They want, they want a site where they can be more settled and, and their, their medical health needs can be better supported. Uh, uh, this, this, this uh initial application came in quite initially, quite, quite early into my elected phase. And I hadn't, obviously, we hadn't had the travellers down at the port. And we've certainly developed a better understanding of their needs and, and what is a better situation for all of us. And for the last two years nearly, we haven't had any enforcement on any other part of Thanet. So I will be fully supporting this because I think it's a step in the right direction to make sure that. Our tra- our traveller community who's got a long history in this area finds somewhere appropriate.
Councillor Nixon.
Funny enough, this wasn't called in that long ago, to be honest with you. When the, the.
Yeah, it seemed that long.
It wasn't though, not that long ago. There's a couple of things I'd like to, to know, really. It says here. Extension to approved Gypsy and traveller site. So I'd like to assume therefore that that's TDC approval.
No, it's approved on appeal.
It's approved on appeal.
Right, okay. So there, so that's, that was my question, sorry, I'm mis- misreading that then. So whereas I agree with the whole idea about, you know, let's give people somewhere permanent to go and all the rest of it. I don't want TDC to wriggle out the fact that.
Yes.
Ultimately, there needs to be bloody sites.
Proper sites.
Quote me on that. And so therefore, I'd like to speak to the council as to. Let's be careful what we wish for. So if we grant this, does that help them get a permanent site or does it? Or, or not? So in some ways, I would be reluctant to say yes to do this because what I want is a permanent site. Do you see what I mean?
Or, yeah.
Yeah, if, if I could just say really that um, the ex- the extension is not an ex- land extension. It's an extension of two caravans to double two caravans. So the extra two caravans, I take it are what uh, uh, is why it's a retrospective application. That they've, the caravans are already there. I don't know, I haven't visited the site, I haven't got a clue. Um, obviously, the issues that was mentioned on the first application. As to why we was refusing, be- was because of the um, the school making uh issues. Uh, about children, safety of children, et cetera, et cetera. Not from the people, but from the access, et cetera, into, into the site.
Also, there wasn't like anything of harassment to my remembrance of this.
Yeah, so um, I th- I think now that they've, that they're settled, as far as I'm aware, I've not seen any. Any complaints in relation to their use of the site, uh, that they're causing any issues to the school. Um, so therefore I, I've seen, and bearing in mind, exactly what you're saying, this, uh, to answer councillor Nixon's view. Or point, point of view is that it does not affect.
No.
The issues that Thanet District Council has to, to deal with. To provide a statutory site. This is a private site.
Hmm, yeah.
By these, uh, by these travellers. So um, I, I, I can't see, and bearing in mind the um. Approval by the Secretary of State, I see, I see no reason not to approve it, not to recommend approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is now a site.
Yeah, yep.
This is a traveller's site. The only issue is whether it can take four caravans or should be restricted to two. And in my opinion, it can take four caravans.
No, no, we, I mean.
Very soon.
Well, taking aside the issue of accommodation for travellers generally in Thanet. We, there is a duty on the council to make sure that this is appropriate. It's not overpraded, it's not unhygienic, all the rest of that drainage works properly and all that.
Are we proposing?
I propose, Chair.
That looks okay.
I propose that we make no objection to this.
No, seconded, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll vote, yes, vote.
Yes.
All those in favour? Yeah. Okay.
Awesome.
Um, thirty Violet Avenue. I brought this in.
Um, your next application is Thirty Violet Avenue. A direction of single story side extension to existing dwelling, together with alterations to fenestration following demolition of conservatory and outbuildings. To facilitate the erection of one single story, two bed detached bungalow with associated access and parking. Called in by councillor Makinson.
That's all.
Thank you.
Um, yes, it's, they're sort of slightly taking advantage of a bit of garden, really.
A, a fair own bit of gardens, that what you're saying?
It is their own bit of garden, but because it's on the corner.
You've got the existing building up on and then they're going to remove the extension and extend on the other side and then put a bungalow.
Yeah, so it's quite a big development and it is so ugly.
So that's the extension, so you took it off right, and then you're left.
It's gone.
And then you've got the bungalow.
That's very.
The hit roof, which is a particular.
Um.
Yeah.
I'm mindful of uh, a planning application.
I do.
Up on Palm Bay Estate, where right at the end of a, on the major road that's through, through the estate. That there was a piece of land on the end. I think uh, TDC refused consent and it was granted on appeal. And it's rather a large buil- building, so um.
So.
I, I think it's, it's okay, Chair, that's.
You think it's okay?
No problem with it.
Um, okay, so the proposal is that we make no.
No, no objection, Chair.
Right, okay. Oh, that dislike it that I make. Um, all those in favour? Off the town, every time. That's my grandson.
You know. Every meeting.
Um, I'll send it.
That's fine, that's what I was saying.
That's right.
No, we're rigged, Dave.
Flip out and gling you. Make you feel loved.
Oh, the arts.
Next application is four and five. Uh, one is felicity building consent, but it's the same application. Um, Ramsgate Arts Barge, East Cross Wall. Um, application for installation of fire access onto Harbour Parade. From the Ramsgate Arts Barge and the installation of electric kiosk on Pier Yard. Um, thank you. My councillor Makinson.
No objection to the principle, but I'd like to see what it's gonna look like.
Yeah.
Well, they're taking.
I suggest a torpedo, Chair.
Yeah, they're taking down some railings. And they're putting in another escape, which is a thing that we raised last time.
Yeah, I know, but.
But.
Is there no, no pictures? Oh, there we are.
So before we had, go back and just have that one exit, another going in half one.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're made of paraseats.
It's just gonna be a, a gateway.
Yeah, so it looks, it looks sort of.
In keeping with Marina.
So I propose no objection, Chair.
I love it.
Favour?
Well, I don't think it should be there at all, actually.
Well, of course, it wasn't there before Gavin put the pontoon where it should have been.
That's, that's not what we're voting on, so let's.
No, I know. It's not, so it's quite. All in favour?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
And I'll abstain.
There's a fundraiser on Saturday night if anybody wants to come to the.
I'll bring some explosives, but.
Come to the Ramsgate Music Hall.
Thank you, members. The next uh application is to Napleton Road, erection of single story side extension, three. Roof lights to front elevation, together with rear dormer window to facilitate loft conversion and alterations to fenestration. Following demolition to existing lean to, called in by councillor Makinson, thank you.
I can't remember why I called this in.
You said very large extension.
It's a bit massive, it's a bit.
Hang on, let's have a look.
The side and then you put the hell on the top, basically they're adding the side and facing that.
Yeah, no problem.
Is that somebody else's bungalow on that side?
Yes.
Yeah, the son is detached.
Yeah, but it's not you who are looking, so that's different.
It's not me I'm looking, so it's okay. Oh, no, no comment.
I've to.
No, you would, I'm not sure why you need an application unless the dormer window at the rear is above the ridge height. Um, they certainly don't need anything for any valux windows in the front. You can do that under permitted development. It's not in a conservation area. Um, I give, but I've got no objection to it, Chair.
There's no comment.
Yeah, seconded.
All in favour?
Yeah. It's, um, one four three to one four seven High Street, is this?
This has already been approved.
Yeah, let's put it up anyway.
No, Chair.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's gone.
It's gone.
We do share, so I, I can't see the point in that, Chair, to be honest.
Just you might be interested in what's happening in your town.
Read it.
No.
Really, Chair?
Okay, no.
Dean's hovering there. Yes or no? No?
No.
Thank you.
But Dean has contacted them to say why are we not, why are we not seeing?
This used to happen very regularly when I was on this council previously, but, and, and it hasn't happened nearly so, yeah, nearly so often recently.
Chair. If I may, if, if I may, uh.
On the list.
Ask our uh deputy town clerk here if she could raise the issue with the town clerk. To ask why we are not getting applications before.
I believe Dean has already done that.
That's what we just.
Yeah, so I received the amended one that'll be going out tomorrow and it's actually got a deadline on it, but this one didn't.
Didn't have a deadline on it, okay.
And then um when I sent it out to you guys.
Yeah. Yeah, done.
It was already gone.
Okay.
It's a massive backlog, isn't it?
Yeah.
Story, let's go.
I understand.
Okay, Fifteen Langdale Avenue, erection of single story rear and side extension, a side dormer window, together with alterations to roof. Two roof lights to facilitate a loft con- conversion following demolition of existing garage. Councillor Makinson called in, adding another story to the house, was your comment.
Yes, I mean, I've seen them add stories to the house all down Mile Gate Road and I would have thought they'd need it.
So you've got the side of the grid and then just going up one, which is like that.
So.
Got any pictures, apparently love photos of what it's currently like, eh?
Only from the actual drawings.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the top ones, I see.
Yeah.
And then it's changing.
Ooh.
So it's.
Yeah.
It's a big, big.
Yes, it looks, it looks a bit bulky, doesn't it?
Hmm. It's um.
Yeah, I've just had, so um with the um dorm on the top, there is all the other dorms in that road are rear facing.
Yeah.
And this is the only one that is facing opposite.
Do we know what's the property next to it? Does, does that look onto it?
I suppose.
Sure.
Ah, okay, so it's not really looking into anything there. Okay.
Okay, no comment. Oh, I propose no comment, only.
Oh, seconded, Chair.
And all those in favour? Yeah.
I'm staying.
So when I look at these, uh.
That is. Guy's been texting in there, took a baton in.
Go, Chair, um, Fanatic Council have just published.
Yeah, go, sorry.
Oh, me, sorry. Councillor Green, do you want me to turn this off?
No, no.
No, okay.
Fanatic Council have just published their map of the land that has been put in for development. Could I request that we have discussed that?[1778.21]